...with liberty and justice for all. Okay, members present this evening are myself, Mayor Marl, councilmembers Burgoyne, Girbaugh, Cybo Koenig, Rhodes, Roth, and Mayor Protem Tahar. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, Clerk Royal, city superintendent engineer Rubel, city treasurer Bennett, police chief Rennick, Parks and Rec director Scruggs, and public works director Fordice. For the rest of you, if you please sign in in the back, we would appreciate that. At this time, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as amended. In front of you, you have a memorandum with actually three changes this evening. One is an amendment to consent or to an item on the consent agenda, excuse me, C-14-151 regarding the tax board of review. And then we have two new consent agenda items, C-14-52 regarding the Celine Addiction Prevention Task Force, and C-1453 proclamation honoring Leslie Niedhammer for 25 years of service at the Celine District Library. So please take note of those. Mr. Burgoyne?
One additional item on 14-42 consent agenda, I'm going to pull it.
Okay, alright. Well, I appreciate the heads up, and of course, we'll get to that when we get to the consent agenda. I appreciate you letting me know. Are there any additional changes to the agenda this evening? No, then I would seek a motion, as I said, to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Moved by councilmember Girbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilmember Roth. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences this evening, so we will dispense with that. And we have one presentation this evening. It is the Michigan Green Communities Challenge 2013 results. And I'll turn the floor over to our DPW director, Mr. Fordice.
Good evening. The Michigan Greens, the Michigan Green Communities Network is a, kind of started as a fairly informal peer group, but has, over the past couple of years, gotten a little more formalized, organized by Michigan Municipal League and Department of Environmental Quality. And there are some other statewide organizations that are supporting members of it. They started a challenge. Again, it's kind of a peer-to-peer friendly competition, started in 2009. Those first couple of years, Celine competed and received recognition for competing. And last year, we advanced to the bronze medal level. And for 2013, which was just recognized at the conference on Tuesday last week, we advanced to the silver medal level. So we have a paper silver medal. And in this past year, I think it's, my takeaway from it is that it's really become more of a citywide effort now, because some of the things that we're, that we scored points for in 2013 and were recognized for include work from the Environmental Commission, their Lend a Light program. We scored some points for that. The reviewers were impressed with that program. We've got some long-term results coming in from, we had, we had all of our buildings audited about four years ago. In this past year, we implemented one of the major recommendations of that. Carla Scruggs and Brian Sproul worked to replace the boiler at the rec center with a high-efficiency model. We've got the continuing implementation of the non-motorized plan. Gary Robel and the Woodland Drive project extended bike lanes on that route. And, you know, one of my projects, working with DTE to convert old streetlights to new LED energy-efficient technology. So it really has become a broad-range group team effort, and we're showing the results of that.
Thank you, Mr. Fordice. Appreciate the presentation. Are there any questions or comments for our DPW director? Mr. Girbaugh?
Just curious, will we be able to qualify our work that we're doing on the pollution control facility as part of the improvements because of some of the things that we've changed in terms of methane use?
Yeah, I'll have to look at that for next year's and see where it fits into the checklist, because certainly water quality is one of the, one of the issues that the challenge focuses on.
Good, okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh. Any additional questions or comments?
From council?
No? Thank you, Mr. Fordice. Appreciate your time this evening. We move on now to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required, to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? Please.
Jim Peters, 509 Springbrook. Just wanted to say a few words on behalf of the Parks Commission tonight regarding the Scout Project on tonight's agenda, item 1444. Parks Commission supports the Scout Project 100 percent. One of the purposes of an Eagle Scout Award is not just to build something, but to test that particular scout and his managerial skills. I'd just like to say that Alex has done outstanding job of preparing for this effort. He has pulled the appropriate permits, has communicated well with the city parks director, city engineer, other city personnel, and all the appropriate Boy Scouts America officials. He's also worked with licensed professional archaeologists and licensed professional engineer in this effort. His plans successfully adhere to the strict building guidelines of trail construction, and the Boy Scouts have an excellent trail program. And when you get a Boy Scouts trail, you've got one hiccup of trail. Alex also has his fundraising game plan in order and a great list of volunteer resources lined up. So he's quite a young man, and this project should earn him his Eagle Award. His efforts will also help pave the way for future Eagles who could come along and add on to this trail as the years go by. So in the future, Celine will have a beautiful first-class trail in our park, a history-walking trail that will be strictly courtesy of Boy Scouts America. So the Parks Commission expressly requests that the city council approve this project tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. We appreciate you being here and appreciate your comments. Are there additional, additional citizen comments? Please.
Can we address an item up for discussion at this time?
Yes, ma'am, you can.
I'm Jean Bandy. I'm a lifelong citizen of Celine and recently retired from Celine Police Dispatch. I'd like to address the item up for discussion regarding outsourcing the Celine Police Dispatch. I live in Celine because our community is clean and safe. A strong and effective Celine Police Department is central to our quality of life. I believe the city has now taken two big steps toward dismantling the police department. One, there are now five unfilled positions at our police department, and that's more than a 25 percent reduction in staffing, leaving only 13 full-time personnel in the entire department. And number two, the move to outsource night dispatch effectively closes the police department for much of the night. I understand these are difficult times. We all make difficult budget choices, but not having enough money to run our police department is just plain financial irresponsibility. Anything less than a 24/7 police department and our department restored to full staffing is unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Appreciate your comments. Additional citizen comments?
Mary Laronas, 373 West Bennett. I was surprised and disappointed to read the following in the Ann Arbor News on February 27th. Pittsfield Township will consider a proposal from the city of Celine to take over its dispatch services for 12 hours per day. Supervisor Mandy Gruhl said she did not know any of the proposal's details. She said Pittsfield was contacted by Celine to set up the presentation. Pittsfield Township Director of Public Safety Matt Harshberger said Celine proposes sharing dispatch services between 8:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m. Apparently, the city of Celine is moving ahead with contracting with Pittsfield on dispatch services before any public meetings are being held. The message I get from this is that city administration does not care what the public thinks about this.
Thank you, Mary.
Mary Hess, 600 Canterbury. As you know, I have served as a council member for 22 years. And during that time, there have been some interesting mistakes. Let's see, we bought the Methodist Church uptown to make it for a courthouse and a police station and a senior citizen. And three days, three years later, it was voted three to one to sell. There's some other paperwork, but I think it definitely is a letdown to the taxpayers to take such a dramatic step, to even begin to drop the possible security of our citizens. Two and a half years ago, there was a questionnaire filled out, I think it was $8,000 the city paid, and two on the staff or where you see the chart, taxpayers said they would pay more for police and fire. There were a lot of things they'd rather have cut out, and I think that was downtown as far as expenditures. I noticed on your capital improvements tonight, it's changed because on the capital improvements from 13 to 18, at one time, it had a million dollars for non-motorized trails. I wonder if that's still on the docket. And then there's a market structure for downtown farmer's market, $700,000. I wonder if that's still on the docket. Then we have a streetscape downtown area. It was $1,900,000, but apparently that's been dropped to $425,000. These are not public safety expenditures. Our police and fire, water and sewer, DPW are. The reason you should tax a roof over my head is for services I must have that I can not provide for myself, or nor can you provide for yourself, and it's water, sewer, police, fire. DPW are streets. Other than that, take a collection.
Thank you, Mary.
My name is Patrick Tombo. I live at 1462 Middle Drive, Celine. I noticed in Thursday's paper an interesting headline which reflects perhaps what we're talking about today. Three teens charged with murder in connection to death of MSU student who was left in the road after they robbed him and killed him. This seems to be inopportune to talk about lessening police sources. In addition, as you know, St. Joe's is also going on a restricted schedule of hours, and so gradually, the reputation we have as a fine city to live in seems to be fading away. The only thing you need to do now, of course, is to roll in the sidewalks at 6 o'clock. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there additional citizen comments? No? Then we move on to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion. I want to note that Mr. Burgoyne has requested that item C-14-42 be removed, and that'll be placed as the first item under New Business. That's correct, isn't it, Mr. Burgoyne?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any other changes to the consent agenda this evening? No? Then I would seek a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So moved.
Moved by Mayor Protem Tahar. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Cybo Koenig. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on now to New Business, item C-14-42. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated February 24, 2014, from Assessor Skoll, and to acknowledge receipt of the 2014 preliminary assessment role of taxable properties as certified by Assessor Skoll, and to open the role for public inspection the week beginning March 10 with notice thereof to be given as required by law. Is there a motion?
Motion to acknowledge receipt.
Okay, it's been moved by councilmember Burgoyne to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Tahar. Mr. Burgoyne, do you have a question or comment, sir?
Yes, sir. Well, my question is to our assessor, how does this year's tax role compare to last year's tax role in terms of the money that it will bring in, you know, the level of funding that it will bring? And what is the percentage inflation adjustment that can be used this year? I just had questions. I support this. I just had questions.
The CPI, or the Consumer Price Index, so the inflationary factor for 2014 is 1.6 percent. So where there is room or difference between the SEV and the taxable value, the taxable value from the prior year can only go up 1.6 percent. There are, of course, some exceptions to that. Properties that have transferred ownership in 2013 would not be subject to that cap. Also, any new construction, new items to the assessment role would also come on in addition to that 1.6 percent.
And actually, I have two other questions. I'll repeat one of the questions, which is, how much did the total tax valuation, in other words, what we can collect from last year to this year, how much is that projected to change? Is that projected to stay even, to go up by 1 percent, or, you know, comparing last year's numbers that we had as a tax base and the 2014 tax base? How do they compare?
I don't actually have it prepared to give you a percentage.
Maybe you could email us.
I can certainly do that. I can tell you that the taxable value did increase from 2013 to 2014 beyond the 1.6 percent, but not, not a whole lot more. So the majority of property would be capped at that 1.6 percent CPI factor. We have the IFT role as well, and the IFT role went up about $7 million in taxable value. The ad valorem role went up about, let me see here.
I'm actually just looking for a very simple number. Last year, how much we could take in in taxes, and this year, what we're projected to take in in taxes, how that affects the general fund, you know? Is it like one, and you can just email us.
Sure.
I have a third question, though. I have one.
And just one other thing is that this is, of course, tentative.
Right.
Until the Board of Review is concluded, at the end of March, we'll have final totals.
And equalizer, okay.
Yes.
Yeah. My third question. In the United States, on average, I understand that people move every six or seven years. So they might buy another house in the same community, they might go to another community, buy a house, and that type of thing. So I'm wondering, in this tax role, what proportion of our residences changed hands? Because, you know, if you expect a certain number of changing hands, that uncaps.
That is true, and I would have to get that percentage to you all by email as well.
Great, great.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
No? Not a problem, Mr. Burgoyne. Are there additional questions for Assessor Skoll? Mr. Girbaugh?
Just one, do we have an average, so 1.6 percent for the CPI, but what about overall for assessed value?
The residential overall went up a little bit over 6 percent. Industrial was just a little bit better than flat, which is actually an improvement from prior years, so we're getting there. And commercial would be about 4 percent, and that would be assessed.
Right. Cool, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh. Are there additional questions? Assessor Skoll, thank you. Appreciate it very much. There is a motion on the floor, moved by Burgoyne, seconded by Tahar, to acknowledge receipt. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to New Business, item 14-44. This is Alex Reeves' Eagle Scout Project. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the February 6, 2014 memo from Jody Roberts, the Celine Parks Commission Recording Secretary, and to approve or not to approve the Eagle Scout Project of Alex Reeves to develop access and provide signage at Salt Springs Park. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Girbaugh. Thank you. Ms. Scruggs?
Yes, I'd like to say just a couple of words before Alex does his presentation. I've worked with Alex for a few months. He came to us wanting to do his Eagle project, had identified Salt Springs Park as a potential project site. And after talking with him and kind of going over what the project might entail, I think this is a great first step in trying to get this park up and going. As you know, Salt Springs Park is our newest park, I think, I think, in over 30 years. And it's relatively in a wild state, has a great area for viewing the waterfront and so on and so forth. And I'm not going to steal Alex's thunder, but he has met with myself, he did a presentation to the park commission, which was approved and recommended to city council. And in addition, Alex met with our DPW director, or myself, city engineer, and our water treatment plant, just to kind of discuss, because everyone is kind of involved in this. So he's done his homework, I thoroughly endorse this, and I will turn it over to Alex to do the presentation.
Thank you very much. Alex, we appreciate you being here this evening.
My name is Alex Reeves. I'm a life scout currently with Troop 4 out of Ann Arbor, Michigan, and I'm looking to conduct an Eagle project in the new Salt Springs Park that was just started a few months ago in Celine. In case some of you don't know where the Salt Springs Park is, or maybe haven't visited it, it is right here in Celine. It's just, it's right along the river, just south, just south and east of Curtis Park. The current access is next to the water treatment plant, and that's where I propose to stage the project. I've already talked to the water treatment plant director and received permission to This page here illustrates the Parks and Rec Commission's eventual site plan for developing the park. This part of the, of the plan here is a walking trail, a non-motorized trail through the park. My project focused on this section of the park right here, just by the entrance into this first salt spring. This is a diagram of what I intend to do in the, in the park, or what I propose to do. As you can see, the trail will start just inside the park at that first manhole and continue down towards the salt spring. By the salt spring, there's a marshy drainage area. I'm securing permits to work in that area, and I propose to put a boardwalk over some of the wettest parts that will keep it from being damaged by people who want to walk through the park, and also provide, provide a way to get past the spring without, without either damaging it or, and without damaging it and conveniently. Both the trail and the boardwalk will conform to trail building guidelines and will be, and will be accessible to disabled persons. I also propose to put a fence around the salt spring. So as you can see, it's labeled in that diagram. This fence is going, is proposed to be a split rail fence. As you can see in the lowermost picture here, I chose a split rail fence because it will provide a barrier to people and prevent, prevent casual access across the spring, but it still provides a fairly low visibility barrier and will allow people to observe the spring and won't unnecessarily impede wildlife. I've included some pictures here of the, of the Salt Springs Park. On the left-hand side are three pictures of Salt Springs. These don't happen to be the Salt Springs that I'm going, that I propose to be working with, but they are Salt Springs in the park. On the right-hand side, the middle photo is a picture of the Salt Spring that I propose to work at. That Salt Spring is, it's currently frozen, I believe, but you can see there's a dark, dark patch in the middle of the picture. That's because the salty water freezes at a lower temperature than, than water that is pure, so it actually remains open during the winter. The bottom picture is a picture of the trail looking from the Salt Spring toward the entrance to the park. This trail is part of an abandoned construction road, so there's a, there's a pre-existing surface. I wouldn't be constructing a complete trail from scratch. There's an existing trail that I would be cleaning up, renovating, and repaving. That trail is about 150 to 200 feet long, and it would be surfaced in a, after discussion with the Parks and Rec Commission and with city engineer Gary Robel. Are there questions? Yes.
That's very impressive. What, what crew are you going to have to put this together?
You mean, who am I going to try to recruit to work on the project?
Yes.
I'm going to...
Who's going to build it, actually build it?
Who's going to build it? That's a good question. I'm planning on recruiting assistance from my scout troop, from people at my school. We have a school-wide work day in the Ann Arbor-Ipsilanti-Celine community in early April, and I've already talked to the coordinator for that event and gotten a, and I've talked to the coordinator, and they've said that I can have a crew for that day. That's in the beginning of April. I'll also be contacting citizens of Celine to see if they would be willing to help with the project.
Mr. Tahar?
Yes, thanks. Sounds like a, congratulations. It sounds like a great project. The, the motion also mentions you propose to provide signage. Could you talk about what, what your plans are about that?
Yes, absolutely. The sign that I, signage that I plan to provide for the park is similar to the signage that was recently put in at Curtis Park. I believe I have a picture of it. One moment.
Do you have a real picture of this?
These are the plans for the signage that I intend to put up. Actually, this exact sign was put up in Curtis Park several months ago as part of an Eagle Scout project. This is the kind of sign that I would intend to put up in the park.
And, and what would the content, what information would you have in the sign?
On the sign, I would put some historical information about the Salt Springs. I would put some of the, a description of what a Salt Spring is, an explanation of why it's important. Like I said, some of the history on there, and then some of the cultural impacts on Celine.
Great, thank you.
Additional questions? Mr. Girbaugh?
You indicated that you've already gotten some of the permits and such. Do we have to have DNR and that type of situation because they're wetlands or Washtenaw County? I mean, Mr. Rubel may be able to answer that, but whatever we can do to help expedite this, feel free to ask us, and we'll see if we can get that done.
Okay. I'm, I'm working with a, with an archaeologist who works with Mr. Jim Peters, and he has indicated that the permits needed are the permit to work in a wetland. However, I'm already working on the application for that permit, and it's anticipated that the application will be complete sometime before the work is scheduled to begin.
Sounds good.
Additional questions? Comments? Mr. Rhodes?
Not a question, but a comment. This certainly seems to be one of the more complex Eagle Scout projects that have come before us in quite a while, and I congratulate you on your willingness to take this on and to work with all these different groups. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burgoyne?
I have an additional comment. I think we owe a continuing thanks to Jim Peters, who has been working to develop this whole thing. And I also think that during our budget... And I also think that during our budget, upcoming budget process, we should look for ways for partnering with our Parks and Rec to make this entire park come alive sooner rather than later. So, if there are ways to match funds from the outside or something like that, I think our staff should keep that in mind and try to look for something to make this happen.
Absolutely. Additional comments or questions? Alex, I would just add, this is a very ambitious project, but it's a really good one, and I applaud your interest in helping us to essentially create a park. It's a very worthwhile initiative, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Scruggs, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No.
Okay. Alex, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Is there any additional discussion on this motion? No? Okay, then it's been properly moved by Burgoyne, seconded by Girbaugh to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 14-45. This is Parks and Rec Grant Judy Ivan. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the February 12, 2014 memo from Parks and Recreation Director, excuse me, Scruggs, and to authorize, or not to authorize, staff to make application to the Judy Ivan Healthy Communities Endowment for a grant to purchase two baby changing stations, additional benches for all three changing rooms, and a new non-slip flooring. Is there a motion?
Move to authorize.
It's been moved by Rhodes to authorize. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Roth. Director Scruggs, do you care to comment at all? No? Okay. Oh, questions? Mr. Burgoyne?
Yeah. When the council authorizes a grant project, it's proper to have an amount of money in there. So, I would like us to throw in for approximately X amount of money, whatever it is.
I apologize. I was talking in the back, and I thought you were still talking about the Eagle project. Regarding the grant project, I apologize for not having a grant amount on there. I do have some cost estimates. The diaper changing stations would be 200, or, excuse me, 300 each for a total of 600. The benches are, I'm approximating about $200 each, so that's another 600. In the flooring, we do have an estimate for the flooring, which is 9,000. So, we would be requesting 10,200 for this grant.
Could we add the word approximately 10,200, and if it varies a bit? Could we add that in the motion?
I would recommend adding it at the end of the motion. So, following the new non-slip flooring, well, let me just read the motion in its entirety. To acknowledge receipt of the February 12, 2014 memo from Parks and Rec Director Scruggs and to authorize staff to make application to the Judy Ivan Healthy Communities Endowment for a grant to purchase two baby changing stations, additional benches for three changing rooms, and a new, excuse me, non-slip flooring in the approximate amount of $10,200. Is that correct, Ms. Scruggs?
Correct.
You comfortable with that, Mr. Burgoyne?
Sure.
Would the mover and seconder be amenable to adding that to the motion?
I am.
Okay, so it is added, without objection. Did you have anything further, Mr. Burgoyne?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Scruggs, do you care to make any additional comments?
No, thank you.
No? Thank you. Additional questions? Mr. Hark?
Yes, so, just to make sure I understand correctly, the grant amount will cover the full cost. There's no matching requirement from the city or any-
Correct. There's no matching amount. We've been successful in getting a Judy Ivan grant in the past. Sometimes they will fund the full amount, sometimes they may give you partial. So, whatever we might, if we are lucky enough to get awarded this, then we would do what we could with the money that we're given.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? No? Okay. Ms. Scruggs, thank you. Additional discussion regarding this motion? Okay, please note the additional language that's been inserted at the end of the motion, and again, it's been properly moved by Rhodes, seconded by Roth to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 14-46. This is Saline Main Street Banners. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the March 3, 2014 correspondence from Rebecca Schneider and the Main Street Design Team, and to authorize, or not to authorize, the student banners and the Michigan Main Street Saline banners to be hung on the banner poles in downtown Saline when applicable.
Motion to authorize.
Moved by Burgoyne to authorize. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Sebo Koenig. I don't believe that Mrs. Snyder is here, but Cindy Shupko and Heidi McClellan are here. Do ladies care to make a comment at all?
Do you have any questions?
Well, let's find out. Are there any questions for our friends from Saline Main Street? Mr. Roth?
Who's covering the cost of these banners? And what might that cost be?
Saline Main Street is covering the cost of the banners through our funds that we have within our budget. This is a program, this is a work plan of the design team. This is Heidi McClellan from the design team, and she's co-chairing the Student Banner Project along with Gaines Collins. But the whole work plan is about looking at a whole 12-month calendar of what the banners are downtown on our poles. And that was because there are so many banners that are so worn, tattered, and faded that we thought we better take a look at it, do an inventory of all the banners that are down at the DPW office, and we wanted to identify what the gaps were. So, when we identified the gaps, then we started looking at how can we fill those gaps? And one of those things was the Student Banner Project that we saw actually out in Boulder, Colorado, and decided that this would be a really good thing to bring here. And I'll let Heidi explain the rest of the Student Banner Project.
Yeah, as Cindy said, the Student Banner Project, we saw it in Palm Springs and Boulder through Main Street, and actually, my son and I were driving through Grayling, and we saw some in Grayling as well, and he was really excited. And then the Main Street thing came up, and I said, "I'll share that." But this is kind of the design that it's going to be. I don't show everybody, but, and we're asking students K through 12 in the Saline area, Saline schools and private schools in the area, to submit their artwork about what they love about Saline. And then we'll choose out of the submissions, up to 80, for front and back on the banners. So, we'll have students displaying what they love about Saline. And these will, these are scheduled, I think, for April, May to be displayed downtown.
Mr. Burgoyne?
Yeah, well, it occurs to me that the city itself has some responsibility for economic development promotion in the downtown and has an EDC. And Main Street has limited funds, and I don't know what this is going to cost you and so forth, but from my viewpoint, and I don't sit on the EDC board, I'm just sitting over here, but from my viewpoint, I'm thinking that it would be appropriate for the city to pitch in through its EDC to provide some support towards things of this nature. I don't know if, you know, they would want to support this particular thing, but the more relief we can give to Main Street, the more they can do other things. That's my thought. So, I don't know if some type of collaboration is appropriate.
I can respond to that. Our, you know, our contract for services through, with the EDC and Saline Main Street, those dollars are coming from that part of the budget.
Oh, all right, okay.
Because we didn't do Winter Fest this year, we had some of those dollars left over. We redistributed them so that we could do this project. So, we're good there. Saline Schools has been a great partner in this, too. We've met with our teachers, and they're very excited about, and they're working with the students as well. But we're really trying to get the word out, because the deadline for the design is March 10.
Very good. Additional comments or questions?
Can I say something about the-
Absolutely.
The second part, the Michigan Main Street Saline banners, which are the same as what our entrance signs are at both the west and east ends of Michigan Avenue. We hope to, because of our gaps, print 12 of those and put those at the four corners and at each entrance on Michigan Avenue and North and South Ann Arbor. And those would be kind of a mainstay until there is, there are some events that have the 40 banners. We have 40 banner poles. And then at that point, they would come down, but most of the other times, they would be there. So, it would designate that we are a Michigan Main Street community.
Very good. Thank you, ladies. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Can I say one more thing? Sorry. This is just a thank you. We held our annual celebration on Thursday, and I wanted to really thank the city for the support for this past year. It was wonderful seeing so many of you at the celebration. And the entire, and a lot of the staff were there, too. But the staff and City Manager Todd Campbell and a lot of you are on our committees, and we really appreciate everything that you've done and the partnership that we have. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. It was a very nice event.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Are there additional comments? Is there any discussion related to this motion? No, then it's been properly moved by Burgoyne, seconded by Councilwoman Sebo Koenig, to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to new business item 14-47. This is Uniform and Mat Service Contract. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the February 27, 2014 memo from Public Works Director Fordice, and to authorize, or not to authorize, a four-year contract extension for uniform and mat service, excuse me, to Arrow Uniform for a contract period from March the 2nd, 2014, to March the 20th, 2018, with approximate initial annual value of $9,904. Is there a motion?
Move to authorize.
It's been moved by Mayor Protem Tahar to authorize. Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Councilmember Roth. Mr. Fordice, do you care to comment, sir?
Thank you. Arrow has been providing uniform and mat services to City of Saline for a number of years. We did do a competitive bid in the past, and then three years ago, negotiated an extension. That extension included some small percentage increased costs and a number of weeks of free service. This time around, we wanted to make some changes to the uniforms. So, we negotiated into this one. It was receiving those new uniforms and the new, so all new shirts, new pants, new jackets, and all the customization with name tags and city seal at no upfront charge at all. And then the first year of service at the same cost as the last year of the current contract. And then simply a 1% increase was in years two, three, and four. Our current expenditures with Arrow are approximately $9,900 a year, and that varies a little bit depending on how many staff we actually have and if we need any additional services from them. Those are the highlights.
Pretty cut and dry. Are there any questions for our DPW Director? Mr. Girbaugh?
Just curious. And they're the most, they're the closest local business around here that produces uniforms?
Ian, I'm not sure if there's somebody else geographically closer. They're based in Jackson.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Additional questions for Mr. Fordice? No? Jeff, thank you. Appreciate it. Any additional discussion regarding this motion? No, then it's been properly moved by Mayor Protem Tahar, seconded by Councilmember Roth to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Move on to new business item 14-48. This is revisions to the 2014 fee book. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the February 25, 2014 memo from City Superintendent Engineer Rubel regarding fee book revisions, and to approve or not to approve the revisions to the city's 2014 fee book as recommended. Is there a motion?
I assume so.
To authorize?
Authorize.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Roth. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Sebo Koenig. Mr. Rubel, do you care to comment on your memo?
Thank you, Mayor. As you can see, the presentation this year is different than last year. We've made some improvements in how we present the information to the council, and the process was similar, although we went through a more strenuous exercise with staff this year, and staff did more research into looking into their departmental fees as well as looking at some other communities and making some comparatives. And so, we, you know, checked fee books out in various communities on their website. We made format improvements in our fee books, so the document looks much better and is much more clear to understand on the website. So, all around, we put on a, put in a more strenuous and, you know, wholehearted effort in making these improvements. The spreadsheet that's attached summarizes the work, although much more work went into it than what's indicated here. But this is the end result, and you can see the green column shows what the proposed fees are for that line item on the 27, throughout the 27 pages of the fee book. Only a select number of fees are adjusted every year, mainly those that are four or five years out of date, or new fees that come up because of new requirements, new rules, new offerings made to the public, and so forth, and changes in technology and so forth. So, I guess with that, I would answer any questions the council may have on any particular item.
Is there any questions for Mr. Rubel regarding the 2014, or I should say, the proposed 2014 fee book? Mr. Hark?
Thank you. This is a question of clarification on the first several items. Single stall, double stall, is that the farmer's market?
Correct. I request an obtainable from Nancy Crisp. They have a change in schedule where one segment shortened by a few weeks, the other lengthened by a few weeks, so basically, that's an adjustment based on their schedule.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Tahar?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions for Mr. Rubel? Mr. Rubel, thank you. Appreciate your work on this. Is there any additional discussion regarding this motion? No, then it's been properly moved by Roth, seconded by Councilwoman Sebo Koenig, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 14-49. This is Capital Improvements Program Budget. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the February 24, 2014 memo from Deputy Treasurer McDonough, and to approve and adopt, or not adopt, the Capital Improvements Program, CIP, document for fiscal year 14 through fiscal year 18 as outlined.
Motion to acknowledge receipt and to, as a draft, and to postpone final approval until after we have the data in the budget discussion.
Okay, so it's been moved by Burgoyne to acknowledge receipt and to postpone?
Receipt as a draft.
Yep. And to postpone until, what was the-
Until we do the budget. Put the cart before the horse, put the horse before the cart.
Okay. That motion is an order. It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been seconded by Mr. Girbaugh. I know that our deputy treasurer is not here, but our city treasurer is. Do you want to come up and comment?
Absolutely. The budget, the Capital Improvement Program budget that you have in front of you is for last year's budget, FY14's budget. This is the first time that we presented this for the adoption of FY14. So, this is going and looking at the stuff that's already been improved for this budget. The years 15 through 18, each year, we will do this, this fiscal year. We are going to put the capital improvement project in the budget process itself. So, next month, when we start working on the FY15 budget, at the end of that budget approval, this document will be presented at that time for the FY15. So, this is really not putting the cart before the horse, but-
Well, I beg to differ. This shows FY15, FY16, FY17, and FY18. It goes several years ahead. It has dollar amounts and projects in there. You're telling me something that doesn't jive with what I have in front of me.
Those numbers that you have there in front of you are projected numbers for the projected years that are coming-
And I don't want to adopt them now.
We're only adopting the current year. This is just a planning project.
Do you care to comment, Mr. Camp?
Well, I would just say, to piggyback on-
Well, I would just say, to piggyback on Mickey Joe's statement, that we're wanting to get this approved because, while certainly do agree with Commissioner Burgoyne, the other, the future years, but that's what a, what a five-year CIP is, as far as for the budget. And a living, breathing document, just as the operations budget. So, if those things were to be changed, they could be changed. But we simply wanted to have the, the current fiscal year 14 approved and moving forward of the same projects that have been put into the current budget that have already been approved, so we could, could start someplace. The City of Saline had foregone a capital improvements program prior to '08 because of belt tightening reasons. And so, we've been working on one, I mean, we always have one, but, but as far as to bring one forward and, and have a, it's a, it's a separate, but also part of, the operations budget. But we wanted to get this to go forward. And then, as Mickey Joe said, we would bring the fiscal year 15 as part of the overall operations, the fiscal year 15 operations budget that will be beginning work sessions with city council in April.
Mr. Burgoyne?
Well, I actually disagree with some of FY14. For example, under general fund.
What page, can you reference the page?
Page four.
Yeah.
Under general fund, FY14, two-thirds of the way down, there's... I think that $90,000 that's sitting there, wasn't that a contingency? Didn't we have a 90, Jeff, didn't we have a $90,000 contingency?
Four.
For replacements that might happen, but weren't sure to happen, was a contingency amount?
There was a large amount of equipment money for weather fitting, renovating a snow pile.
$95,000, which was a separate line. And then, another 90.
There was another list of smaller equipment, including an asphalt mill, smaller power equipment like chainsaws, and things like that. So, some of that money has been expended, and it is all scheduled, nearly all scheduled to be expended in FY14.
So, you don't have a contingency line?
It was, a contingency is that it wasn't designated to a specific replacement. It was kind of a, as needed as we go through the year. What's going to break down first? We'll, then we'll replace that.
Then, I'd be willing to change my motion to approve the FY14 column and receive the rest of it as a draft. I, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with approving something that's real.
I'm, that's fine. That's kind of what I was going to say.
So, restate, so you want to amend your original motion, Mr. Burgoyne. So, you want to acknowledge receipt of the February 24, 2014 memo and to approve?
The FY14 column.
Okay.
Throughout.
Okay.
Throughout the document. And to acknowledge the rest of it as a draft for now.
Okay. You clear on that, city clerk?
Yes.
And Mr. Gearbaugh, as the seconder of the original motion, you're comfortable with that modification?
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that we showed that FY18, or 15 through 18 are a draft and not anything that's been committed to at this point.
All right. Do you have anything further, Mr. Burgoyne?
No, I'm good.
Okay. I, you know, I will support the motion. I, I wouldn't have had a problem approving the entire document through fiscal year 18, because as our city manager said, this is a, a living, breathing document and subject to change. But if, if council wants to move in, in the direction it's apparently moving, related to approving fiscal year 14 and then dealing with the, the rest of the document later, that, that's, that's fine by me. I don't envision that being problematic. I do have two comments, and they're more rhetorical than anything else. And I mentioned the first item to our city treasurer and to our DPW director, but I think it's, it would be more appropriate to direct it to our police chief, Mr. Rennick. And I'm on page 10, and I'm looking at, I believe it's the fifth line item related to staff vehicle for our police department. And just the one comment I will ma, I will make, and we can discuss this at, at much greater length during the actual budget, is it's been brought to my attention that, this winter especially, when we have days of extreme inclement weather, it has been a challenge to have an entire fleet of police cars that are neither four-wheel-drive vehicles or all-wheel-drive vehicles. And what ends up happening, this is again, my understanding, that the officers then end up using the DARE Explorer, which does not have the type of equipment the other vehicles have, and it's not pursuit-rated. So, the one thing, to make a long story short, that I'd like to look at is maybe spending a little bit more and getting a Yukon or some police vehicle that would be all-wheel-drive. Again, just something to think about. We can have a future discussion on that, but I wanted to make that part of the record. And then, secondarily, and this question is, is probably for Mr. Ruble. And Mr. Ruble, when we spoke earlier this afternoon, I apologize that I did not bring this up. This is also on page 10, and it relates to the reconstruction project of Harris from US 12 to Harper. And again, you don't need to give me an answer this evening. There'll be ample opportunity to discuss this, but I'm wondering why we're not going all the way to Wallace. That's a very, that's not, that's 100 feet, 200 feet. It's in just about the same condition and state as the rest of Harris, North Harris, which isn't very good. Right. And I'm just wondering if that can be looked at, or if you have a...
In fact, I just sent an email today to the deputy treasurer, as I was reviewing the document. And the reason, one, one of the reasons is that the section you mentioned is in the major street fund, because it's also on the arterial system. The last block is a local street, and so, we can't intermix the funds. But the intent is to include it in the design and add it to the local street fund. And that's, we're going to do that when we get to the point where we do the design work, which is next spring.
Okay.
So, that will be incorporated into considerations for the FY16.
Okay. Okay. Well, we can have a future discussion about that, but I appreciate the update. Okay. That's all I had. Mr. Roth?
I'm a little bit confused that we're trying to treat this plan as approving all expenditures. And I think it's, I like the way the original motion was, it is a plan that we're looking at, instead of looking at nitpicking at each item. That's what appears that we're doing. It appears to be that if we approve this, you go out and buy it. In the past, each item came up in front of the council as a separate business item, and we approved it as business. So, I really don't like the way the motion stands at this point in time.
Okay.
And I don't like where the discussion is going, because it's leading to us, well, we all agree to it. I agree to a plan, but I can't agree maybe that everything is in it.
Sure. Okay. Mr. Burgoyne?
Well, I think that's what the motion says. The motion says that the existing FY14 budget, those columns are to be approved. And the rest of it is only a plan. I mean, I think that's what the motion says.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion? Would you mind?
No, I've got it.
Re-reading the motion?
To acknowledge the February 24, 2014 memo from Deputy Treasurer McDonough, and to approve and adopt the capital improvement program document for fiscal year 14 column as outlined, and to acknowledge fiscal 15 through eight, fiscal year 15 through 18 as a draft.
That?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Gearbaugh?
Yes.
Be clear. Okay. Well, if there's no further discussion, the motion has been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, and the motion carries. We move on to our last action item this evening, which is the Saline wastewater treatment improvement contractors' application for PYMT number four. This will be a motion to acknowledge the memo dated February 24, 2014, from City Superintendent Engineer Ruble, and to approve or not to approve payment number four of the wastewater treatment plant improvements in the amount of $307,000, excuse me, $226.60 as submitted. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
It's been moved by Mayor Protem Tahar to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rhodes. Mr. Ruble, do you care to comment at all?
Just that work is progressing despite the weather. And we did have a very good progress meeting here a couple of weeks ago. Our engineers at Tetra Tech are working diligently on addressing some of the allowance items that they mentioned in their memo, just to validate that the allowances were spent within, within their bounds and that the, they received the proper backup on materials and labor use and so forth to justify expenditure of the allowances. So, they would come on, become, they would come on as subsequent. And if there's any change orders they're working on, that would come back at probably a council meeting next month.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Ruble. Are there any questions for city staff? No? Okay. Mr. Ruble, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Any discussion? No, then it's been properly moved by Mayor Protem Tahar, seconded by Councilmember Rhodes, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries. We move on to discussion items. The first one is commission committee and task force reports. Ms. Tahar?
Thank you. The Saline Arts and Culture Committee met today. We are continuing to move the work forward on our proposal to move the sculpture, the bust of Orange Riston, to an outdoor location. And an update on a project we've been working on for a while. The committee has proposed to the high school art department to sponsor design of a sculpture by, design and production of a sculpture by students in the art department and potentially the welding department for display in Saline. We had hoped that this might happen this spring. However, the disruptions to the school schedule because of the weather have made life complicated in lots of ways. And so, that project probably will not move forward until the fall. The art teachers continue to be very excited about the possibility, as does the committee, but we're just, we're just looking at it postponed because of all of the other disruptions this year because of weather. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tahar. Additional commission committee or task force reports. Mr. Rhodes?
The Environmental Commission met on February the 19th, and one of the major items of discussion had to do with the upcoming electronic waste recycling event, which will take place here at City Hall the last Saturday in April. That's April the 26th, from 9:00 in the morning until 3:00 in the afternoon. A large variety of items that can be recycled, and one does not have to be a resident of the City of Saline. If you get it to us, we will take it. This is a joint effort by the Environmental Commission and the Fifth Corner Teen Center. Proceeds go to support the teen center. And we will have 200 seedlings to give away to the first 200 people, if they want them, who come to the e-waste event. So, looking forward to that. It should be another successful event. And then, on February 24th, I attended the River Raisin Watershed Council meeting in Tecumseh. Small group of people, very dedicated, very passionate about what they do. And they are continuing to work on developing a program of events, educational events, and cleanup activities for 2014, as they're on a calendar basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Roth?
This past Thursday, I attended the MML Transportation Infrastructure Committee meeting in Lansing. The committee gave approval for Senate Bill 695, 697, and House Bills 5168, 5169, that pertain to a 3.3-mile streetcar project. It's in another locality. So, they had a lot of red tape they need to go through and make some improvements. But the best thing that I heard was Senate Bill 608, is additional road funding for snow removal. It may provide Saline as much as $33,699, $39.79, as calculated by Act 51's formula. So, we'd probably get some reimbursement for the extra costs that we have. And it indicated that perhaps there may be another funding if this weather continues on. And a brief memo was distributed for the ADA, which is American Disabilities Act, requirements for specification for curb ramps and streets, was distributed. And I brought this information back, and I shared it with Mr. Fordice.
Excellent.
And also, there's discussions regarding water storage maintenance issues and cautions, perhaps, as far as things that should be considered if you're doing a, a maintenance agreement with any particular company, some cautions along with that. So, it was a very beneficial meeting.
Very good. Excellent. Appreciate you, you serving on that subcommittee, Mr. Roth. Other additional commission committee or task force reports. Mr. Gearbaugh?
Just clarification. Alphabet boards met. That's the taxing boards. But it was just really to elect our officers. There was no real agenda items at this point. And planning and HDC were canceled because there were not enough agenda items to basically have the meetings. So, we haven't any additional information coming about 147 and that at this point in time. A concern did come up with HDC regarding some recent replacements that occurred in one of the houses, and that will be being dealt with and probably referred to the code enforcement review, so that we can get some things, because sometimes these concerns occur, and we're unable to stop them. And once something's damaged or lost, it can't be replaced effectively.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh. Mr. Rhodes?
I also attended a Michigan Municipal League Committee. This was the Economic Development and Land Use Committee. That meeting took place last Friday, and we reviewed 10, a total of 10 different House and Senate draft bills to develop positions on them from MML. Some supported, some opposed. One of the ones that generated a fair amount of discussion had to do with the crowdfunding legislation that was recently passed, which would allow for entrepreneurs, small business owners, to generate revenue income from individuals within the state, as long as it's all intrastate. And the next step was to create a stock exchange for those investments, again, within the state. So, this is, I think we would, Michigan would be just the second state to enact one of those. And one of the things that we took a position of opposition to were some potential changes to TIF's DDAs, which would provide three opportunities for existing agencies to opt out of their existing TIF DDA if certain changes were made to it. So, did not think that was a good idea.
And actually, those bills received a hearing and initial discussion in the House Tax Policy Committee. So, I'm glad that you discussed that, and hopefully, league members from across the state will contact their reps and senators and voice their opposition. It looks like those are getting a little bit of traction. So, thank you for that update, Mr. Rhodes. The additional commission committee or task force reports. Just very briefly, and you may have read about this, and the Saline Reporter and the Ann Arbor News are on the Saline Post, and of course, it actually made Fox 2 News at 10 a week ago Monday. But the Saline Addiction Prevention Task Force had its first meeting a week ago. As you all will recall, it's, it's co-chaired by our police chief Larry Rennick and then Dr. Smith Nagpa. I thought they had a very successful initial meeting. And there was a sizable group of, of people from the community at large who, who attended and offered their assistance. And that was, that was really nice. Their next meeting is on March the 13th. Is that correct, Larry? Here at 7:00 PM in Council Chambers. And if you are interested, I encourage you to attend. And for those of you in the audience, or those of you who will be listening or watching this meeting at home, I encourage you to attend as well if you would like to assist in some of the task forces initiatives. So, again, that's next Thursday, March the 13th, at 7:00 PM here in, in Council Chambers. If there are no additional commission committee or task force reports, what reports or other announcements do we have this evening? Mr. Burgoyne, I know you had one, and then we'll go to Ms. Cybo Koenig. You go first.
Thank you. I just wanted to report from the Saline Chamber that Saline Salutes is coming up on March 28th. The Saline Salutes Award, our citizen awards for volunteer efforts. And the selection committee met on the 20th of February, and we announced the honorees this year. The first honoring for Citizen of the Year is Smitha Nagpa. The Lifetime Achievement Award will go to Janik McFaulda. The George A. Anderson The George A. Anderson Vision Award goes to Pete and Lori Toramina. And the youth council met and selected Youth of the Year, Rafael Coroso. We are really honored. These are great volunteers in our community. The event is a lot of fun. It's held at the high school. It's very accessible. Reservations can be made online through the Celine Chamber website, and we'd like to see a big crowd come out and support these wonderful volunteers in our community.
Thank you. Appreciate that update. Mr. Burgoyne.
I have two things. The first is that on March 22nd, Win Big for Kids is the third annual event supporting nine area agencies for kids programs. And tickets are available through the Celine Police Cadets, the Kiwanis Rotary Club, and all of the groups that are involved, Fifth Corner Teen Center. So that's just an announcement. Also, I wanted to talk a little bit more about the transportation issue that we talked about in the work session, because towards the end of the work session, there were two really interesting comments that I thought came out. The first one was by Councilmember Dean Gearbo, who said that we need to think through exactly what our objectives are and what we want to reach, what we want to do as a basis for making a decision. I thought that was very cogent, that we really do need to do that. Secondly, there was a member of the audience, Mr. Randazzo, who suggested that we compare private sector transportation with possible partial support from the city in certain cases. And I was thinking back after that comment was made, also the idea that government doesn't necessarily deliver things most efficiently and with the least bureaucracy. So, if we did, we have a private service now. People's Express is not a government service, a contract. But I, that made me think that we might leave our mind open to attempts that have been made in the past in Celine. I know that taxi services have failed in Celine. They've been tried, and there wasn't enough support. However, at the time that those services did not continue, the city was not providing 48,000 or even 20,000 of subsidy to the taxi service. So, is there some way for us to leave ourselves open to the thought that a taxi service would not only be available from 8:00 to 4:30, but a taxi service actually would run whenever that it made sense for the taxi to run it? And from the point of view of social good, of what the city does to subsidize elderly people on a limited income, or people with particular medical needs that have to take certain trips, is there some way for us to relate to a private service and provide some partial subsidy? So, I thought that those two ideas that came right at the end of the meeting made sense, and I just wanted to bring them up, and hopefully, we can think them through.
Absolutely. Very good. Did you have anything further, Mr. Burgoyne?
No, sir.
Okay. Are there any other reports or announcements? Mr. Roth.
This Sunday, March 9th, the Celine Area Historical Society will be giving them their educational programs held in the Brecken Room at 2:00 PM, Celine Library. Susan Nenadec will present the program called Fascinating American Families. This program proves to be quite interesting, and it's free to everyone.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Roth.
I wanted to give you all just a very brief update. I think you saw at least one email that I sent out, and then I think Mr. Campbell mentioned it in one of his weekly communiques, but the personal property tax reform legislation, obviously, that's moving in a very positive direction. Obviously, it's going to phase out that tax, which has proven to be very burdensome, but it's also, at least at the moment, it appears that it's going to be guaranteeing municipalities and local units of government 100% replacement for the revenue that they'll be deprived by the repeal of PPT. I was speaking to Mr. Campbell prior to tonight's meeting, and our legal counsel, who of course has been on the PPT reform workgroups, will be at our next council meeting in two weeks to give a comprehensive report and analysis on where we're at with that. So I just wanted to make you all aware that he will be here in two weeks to update us thoroughly on this issue. Mr. Burgoyne.
We lost a certain amount on the $80,000 level. Is this replacement supposed to replace the smallish ones also?
Do you want to comment today?
Sure. No, that would not be replaced at that point.
So it's not full replacement, it's full replacement of a certain part of it.
Correct.
Excuse me, yeah. However, I would add, for what it's worth, as you are well aware, Mr. Burgoyne, this process is very fluid, and so it obviously is still subject to change. And what I am telling you tonight is the reality on March 3rd, 2014. Obviously, that's subject to change, but again, things are moving in the right direction, and you know, a comprehensive analysis will be provided to council in a couple of weeks. If there are no additional reports or other announcements, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Campbell. This relates to an issue that he addressed in one of his weekly communiques. He and our business ambassador did a business visit today, which is sort of exciting, so I'll let Mr. Campbell fill you in on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just real quickly, the former Renaissance facility in the industrial park off of Woodland that was vacated last year and was up for sale, a company by the name of, I hope I pronounced this correctly, Acraval Technologies, and their DBA is SISU, S-I-S-U, and they make mouthguards for, you know, for instance, athletic competition, as well as the folks that grind their teeth while they sleep type of thing. But anyway, so they were, they've been in business for at least the last four years. I know they've mentioned that they've grown approximately 50% each year over the last, each of the last four years. And so, they're currently in Ann Arbor, looking at a place to expand, and so now they're coming to, they purchased the former Renaissance facility, and it's currently undergoing renovations right now, and then hopefully, within about a month, they'll be in and conducting business. They have some, they're hoping, currently, they have eight employees, and they're looking, in the next two years, they want to be at 20 employees, and so they're pretty excited, and it's, I mean, it sounds like they're a pretty, fairly strong company, and to add to a number of the strong, growing companies that are currently in the industrial park, so that's certainly, and also, it's, will add to a little the diversity of the makeup of the park, so I think that's important. And they're excited to be part of Celine, and so, I guess, so just kind of stay tuned for, as they move forward, and we'll, we talked to them about, for instance, getting involved with the chamber and those types of things, and they were excited about that. So Kathy Corfman is the business ambassador, of course, will be the point person for working with them, and they were also very pleased with how they'd worked with building the engineering department, so thank you to Mr. Rubel and Mr. Taylor for moving those processes along, and so we're just excited to have them in Celine.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Campbell on that issue?
Not a question, but I can endorse their product. When I saw that they were coming to town, I ordered one of those night guard things for them, and it works really well.
Very good. If there are no additional reports and announcements, we'll move on to our third item on the discussion agenda this evening, Granicus and Legistar Discussion. You may recall, you received a communique from me, I believe, two weeks ago, relating to a conference call that Councilmember Rhodes, myself, City Clerk Royal, and City Manager Campbell head with a representative from Granicus. You may also recall that when we approved and adopted the See Click Fix app for smartphones, we also had a discussion about possibly purchasing or developing a relationship with Granicus, another mechanism, medium by which to engage our constituents and share information. We decided at that time not to pursue it, but as I indicated earlier, we did have a conference call with them, learned a little bit more about the product, and there certainly is some value to it. I don't mean to steal thunder from Councilmember Rhodes, or Clerk Royal, or City Manager Campbell, because I'd love to get you in on this discussion. But one of the things we want to determine from council prior to proceeding with Granicus or researching some other entities, is what exactly is council looking for? What new strategies or approaches to relating to our constituents and the people that we represent, do we want to pursue and potentially adopt? Granicus has several features, as I said, that are appealing, but it's certainly not the only one out there, and it may not be the best fit for the city of Celine based on what council and staff demand. So, I just want to throw that open for discussion, but I welcome comments from our city clerk, city manager, or Mr. Rhodes, who also participated in that conference call. Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you, Mayor. When I first suggested Granicus some months ago, it was only because that was the organization that I happened to have some information about. I'm certainly not wedded to them, and would support the efforts to evaluate other software packages that perform the same or similar functions. My primary purpose for bringing up this kind of software was to allow for better interaction between the residents and city council and staff. And so, I believe it's important, however we decide to go, that individual council members have an opportunity to respond to input from citizens. I understand also the concern that is out there for potential inappropriate responses, but I think that's just part of the game that we play, and perhaps, some of that concern could be alleviated if there were a standard signature that went out on any responses that said something along the lines, this is the response of only this one person, and does not necessarily represent the intent or opinions of the rest of city council or city staff, something along those lines. But if we don't include that mechanism that lets us talk back and forth, then I, then there's no benefit to it.
So I guess, Mr. Rhodes has sort of stated what his desires are and what he's looking for. I'd be interested in hearing from the rest of council. Mr. Gearbo.
If we adopt something like this, I'd like a tool that, yes, we can have this interaction whatever, but usually, to use it for surveying and some other items that allows us to easily adopt that type of technology, approach that way. One of the things I'd like to know from our current status is how See Click Fix has been working. We've had it up now for what, six, eight months now?
Middle of October.
Middle of October. Well, I'd like to see where we are in that, and how well that tool is working, because part of the problem is always looking at the tool and getting the response and use of it, and I want to make sure that whatever we adopt, we can easily communicate it, and actually, citizens can see what the tool is, and they can use it before we even really consider it as adopting it, because I think that's going to be the easiest. The biggest question is, is it user-friendly? Is it something that people can intuitively use, instead of having to learn a bunch of different approaches to it?
We will add, it's a very good point, Mr. Gearbo, we will add See Click Fix as a discussion item at our next meeting, and get a report and analysis from staff on how well that's being utilized, and whether it's a success or not.
Mr. Rhodes.
Just as a side comment to the See Click Fix, because I seem to get copied on all of those that come in, because I signed up for it a long time ago. And we're getting, I believe, a couple of weeks that come in about various things right now. A lot of them have to do with potholes, of course, but the information comes in and is moved very quickly through the process, and is responded to either by DPW or, and are oftentimes by our code enforcement. And the reported issues get fixed. So, from my perspective, I think it's great.
There are additional comments related to this issue? Ms. Tahar?
Yes, just, I think for myself, my interest would be more in ease of gathering input from citizens, which is, even at times when we're having difficult discussions, the number of people who actually give us input is quite limited compared to the whole population. And the other thing about ease of use is, if it's possible, it would be great to be able to test drive some, if there are like demonstration websites where you can actually go in and see how it works, and click around yourself. It would be more useful to be able to compare that, for me, again, personally, to be able to compare with actually trying it out, as opposed to just looking at a list of features and trying to compare.
Okay. Very good. Anything else?
Well, I would, oh yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Roth.
I have a question. How would this information or input be different than the source they use today? As email, telephone calls, and that type of stuff? Because it's just another vehicle. I'm not sure how effective things are today, as far as how readily they are used. And then the next question comes, if they expect a reply, who really is authorized to give the reply? Kind of puts us in a different position when, if we're expected to reply to it.
Right.
Because we've got cautions when we reply email and Twitter and all this other stuff that, Facebook that they have as vehicles today. So I kind of question, is it worth the expenditure, how much more input we're going to get with it? It's just another one of these other vehicles. Who's going to use it? Is it worth it or not?
And all of those are perfectly legitimate, reasonable questions and concerns that would have to be vetted if and when we decide to explore implementing one of these companies' softwares. Yeah, it's a very valid point. I guess I would fall in line, similar to statements articulated by Mr. Gearbo, and perhaps by Mayor Protam Tahar, which is, I think there's probably some value in using a system like this to sort of poll our residents and share some information, and then get their feedback on maybe a particular topic. I'm thinking using it in a very similar way to the way we have historically in the past, used those sort of standard, traditional surveys that were mailed out, just sort of taking it to the next level and doing it in a sort of modern 21st century way. But I guess the consensus I'm looking for tonight is, again, there's merit to Granicus, and they offer a lot of services and products that I think could be beneficial here in Celine, but I would recommend that staff do a little bit more research and maybe reach out to some other companies that provide similar products and services. So if there's no objection, I will assume that we're comfortable moving in that direction. Mr. Burgoyne.
I do like the idea of communication as much as possible. I would be very cautious about any rookie attempts at statistical surveys.
Sure.
I would want it done in a proper way.
And again, a very legitimate concern that would have to be vetted, and to Ms. Tahar's point, oftentimes with surveys, regardless of whether it's done electronically, or whether it's a traditional survey done over the phone or in paper, you can solicit and garner some valuable feedback and perspective, but oftentimes, it is a small sampling, and you have to put it into context.
Okay. Well, if there's no objection, then you understand how we'd like to proceed?
Okay.
Very good. But we will report back on See Click Fix at our next council meeting. Thank you for that suggestion, Mr. Gearbo.
If there's nothing further on this issue, we move on to Celtic Festival Friends of the Celtic Festival update. As you all know, our process of supporting the Celtic Festival continues to evolve, with the goal being that the festival become more independent and autonomous, but hopefully still successful in perpetuity. And our city treasurer has been working with the executive committee on a number of financial changes that she would like to present this evening.
So I'll turn it over to you, Mickey Joe.
I'm not prepared to present the actual changes. I just wanted to...
Excuse me, give you all a heads up.
Right. To remind the council that back in September, October last year, when we did the final project, you know, presentation for the Celtic Festival, we discussed the fact that now that they have successfully filed their 501(c)(3) and received their own tax ID number, there was going to have to be some accounting changes, and I've talked with auditors and the attorneys, and we... And I've talked with auditors and the attorneys, and we are in the process of trying to draft an agreement that would be between the Celine City Council and the Friends of the Celtic on how the funding would be going forward, the terms of repayment and stuff like that. And I have presented and requested information from the, I've requested information from the Friends of the Celtic as far as like what their bylaws are, and we've been working with their treasurer to get checks and balances and stuff like that in place and how we would pursue that. So there will be some draft information coming forward to you in respect to how the funding and moving forward with that will be, and we'll be talking about it, obviously, during budget, too. But just as a reminder that we are going to be changing the way that that is going to be handled, and there will be an agreement that will be coming forward between both parties.
Just wanted to give you a heads up on that. Are there any questions for our city treasurer? Mr. Burgoyne?
Just a comment. I'm not sure that complicating this process, from my point of view, is the right way to go. Spending attorney funds, you know, making a bureaucratic process. I've seen the Celtic as kind of a whipping boy here. The Celtic has been good and has not caused the downfall of the city budget. And I think there isn't a problem there that I can see. That's my comment.
Well, I don't think that anybody on this dais would suggest that the Celine Celtic Festival is responsible for our shaky financial position in the past or currently. And as you know, Mr. Burgoyne, we've taken some positive steps in shoring up our finances in recent years. We think these changes are appropriate and prudent. And as our city treasurer indicated, we are working in a very cooperative and respectful way with the members of the Celtic Festival Executive Committee and the Friends of the Celtic Festival Committee to make sure that they are comfortable with these changes. So I would just ask that people remain open-minded, because I think what's going to be recommended and hopefully adopted will be good for the festival and good for the city.
And just for clarification's sake, the only recommend, the only change is going to be that we need to establish the festival under their own tax ID and so we, tax ID number for the sake of reporting all of their expenditures and revenues. So to do that, it would be operated similar to the way we operate the RAC Center and stuff like that under, well, the RAC Center's our own ID number, but different ID numbers. So we have to have signatures and stuff like that of their authorized people on their account. So that's, the dollar amounts and stuff like that, that's not what we're trying to complicate. What we're trying to do is give them, because they have now received their own tax identity, give them the means and assist them with the means of writing and issuing checks on their own checking account and making sure that that is somehow still regulated as long as the city has any connection with the funds. That's what we're trying to clarify, nothing else other than that. So, and that information will be coming forward in a better presentation. Before I went to the Celtic, you know, as we're going, we want to make sure both parties are involved in what's being, what we're working on.
Mr. Burgoyne?
From my point of view, the Celtic Festival should be a city entity. And the fact that they have friends, as a 501(c)(3) friends of the Celtic would just be a backup for them. I don't see why we have to be involved in the 501(c)(3). And I think it's proper for the Celtic Festival to be a city activity and to keep it simple. I don't know why it has to be so complicated.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. There are additional comments, questions? Okay, again, we just wanted to give you a heads up on this issue. Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Obviously, as she indicated, it will be coming back for future action and discussion. If there's nothing further on that issue, we'll move on then to our last discussion item, which is police dispatch. Let me, before I turn it over to the city manager and the police chief, let me just say, because there were a number of comments made at the beginning of the meeting, that I respect and I appreciate the comments and concerns that were articulated this evening. And again, this is something that city council is simply exploring at this juncture. Nothing is inevitable, and I don't think there's anyone on this dais who went into this process with any preconceived notions. However, I do have to state that consolidated dispatch has worked in a number of other communities. Genesee County took place recently, or they recently changed the way they do dispatch in all of the gross points, in the Grand Rapids area. This has worked in other communities. We don't know yet if it will work or whether it will be appropriate or desirable in Celine. And so that's why we are doing what we are doing currently, which is gathering facts and data. To the point that was made earlier about city officials having a conversation about this with the Pittsfield Township Board, that is absolutely correct, but similar conversations have also happened with Washtenaw County Sheriff and with the City of Myland. So if this process moves forward, there will be multiple proposals to compare and contrast. In fact, I don't even believe there was consensus from the Pittsfield Township Board to draft a formal proposal at this time. So I want to make that very clear. Again, to an earlier point, public safety, police and fire EMS services are absolutely fundamental. It's the most basic and core responsibility that we provide to our citizens. And we don't want to do anything that will diminish or reduce that in any way. I should also note, because we're trying to take a very conservative and responsible approach, you will notice when the first draft of our fiscal year budget is released that we are budgeted for two additional police dispatchers in the event that no change takes place, which could very well happen. So we understand that we will have to hire more personnel if we maintain the status quo. So I just wanted to make that very clear. It was also referenced earlier that we will be having two forums on this issue. We welcome and encourage the public to attend and to voice their concerns and share their opinions. That's why we're here, and we hope that you'll attend one or both if you are interested. Sorry to digress. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. If I might-
Oh, absolutely, I apologize.
Well, I think the mayor covered it pretty well, so. No, but as the mayor did say, as council directed staff to investigate, that's exactly what we're doing. And Chief and I have been working the last few weeks, in particular, meeting with the three entities that Mayor Merrill just mentioned. And so as we prepare for the public forums, we want to come to you all and give city council an update, as well as the folks here and at home, an update. So unless anybody has any questions or comments for me, I was going to turn it over to Chief Rinnick.
Okay, thank you. And that's exactly what I want to do. I just want to give the council a flavor of what we've done so far. We've conducted interviews with Myland, Pittsfield, and Washtenaw County Sheriff's Department. We paid visits to them. We talked to them. We shared numbers with them, gave them an idea of what we are looking for, and we're waiting for responses from those three entities to give us information so we can provide information to you and for those public forums. We've also calculated the cost of what it costs for Celine to have its own dispatch center and what each individual dispatcher costs, including benefits and training. And we'll have that information available for you as well at those forums, hopefully even before those forums, so you have it, so you can look at it before that time. We've calculated the cost for training and backfill. What that is, is new dispatchers are required to go through 40 hours worth of basic training, 40 hours worth of advanced training within a two-year period. And of course, anytime we have a dispatcher that's not here, we have to either backfill that position with another dispatcher or a part-time position, or we have to pay that dispatcher overtime. And so I'll have those costs free as well. We have scheduled five dispatch observations, and I believe every one of you has at least showed up for one of those. I know a couple of you have not had an opportunity to do a night one, and the city manager and I are certainly able to schedule another one or two of those, so everybody gets a chance to see dispatch during the daylight hours and during the evening hours. We've also calculated the calls for service for our agency, how many different types of activities that our police department does, and what type of a load that puts on dispatch. We've calculated our emergency and a non-emergency telephone calls, so the entities that are giving us proposals will know how much workload will be on them, so they can give us a fair and accurate proposal, as well as so you know what it is that our dispatchers do on an annual basis. As the mayor said, we have two public forums and presentations that are scheduled with city council on March 10th and March 12th. March 10th, of course, is seven o'clock at night. March 12th is nine o'clock in the morning. And that's for citizen input and, of course, questions and answers to go back and forth between council members, police chief, city manager, and citizens. We've met with all the police department employees. I've also met with the police department supervision to discuss this. We have an open invitation for city council, for any of you who are interested in visiting one of the three dispatch centers, that can be made available to you. Matter of fact, I strongly encourage so you get to see what those other facilities look like, so you have an idea of what it is. And it's kind of interesting, the three that we're looking at, one of them is basically the same size as us, another one is a medium size, and the other one would be considered a large. So you'll get your variety there if you go along and take a look at all of those. We also encourage you as council members, for the other entities that have already gone to a centralized or a regional dispatch, to speak to your fellow city council persons like from Ypsilanti or from Ann Arbor, to see what they think of it, see what they believe, whether this was a good thing or a bad thing for them to do. I think that's important, that you get that flavor as well. And we certainly would encourage you guys to do that. And then the other thing that I just did today is I contacted central dispatches where the entire county is being dispatched by an entity and found out what their dispatcher to police vehicle ratio is, because one of the questions that came up was, you know, little Celine, are we going to get representation from a bigger dispatch? In other words, are they going to pay attention to little Celine? And so I got those numbers, and I'm in the process of putting that together. And a lot more of this will come to light as these forums come here and as I complete my PowerPoint for you. And I guess at this point, I would just like to ask if there's any questions. I know two of you have sent letters or emails to Mr. Campbell and myself on some questions that you had as a result of those visits to our dispatch. I'm in the process of answering those to make sure that you have that accurate information. And when I have that all done, I will make sure that each and every one of you get it, not just the one that asked. So if there's any questions, I certainly would be happy to answer anything. Or Mr. Campbell?
Mr. Burgoyne?
Yeah, just a comment. I did send six questions, and I do not need them responded to prior to the forums. And as you, you know, develop more detail and information from your contacts, I can wait and get a good response, you know, rather than a preliminary response. That's fine with me.
Thank you. It makes it a lot easier. Thank you.
One of the things that keeps coming up, of course, we're talking about savings and trying to figure out what we're going to do if we do have these savings. I'd like a response or some idea of how, with these savings, either we're improving safety or improving however the operations are for your office, because I know concerns now are this issue with what recently has come about, and it probably is timing about the, with the recent crime that occurred. Understanding exactly what we could do to benefit ourselves, even with the aspect of, you know, drug control or any of that, whether or not this would mean another officer, whether it would mean that we just start changing this because we need dollars somewhere else in the city. I think that's going to be a big discussion point, that we need to understand what are we benefiting from trying to change the savings.
Okay.
Makes sense?
That four-wheel drive. That's pretty nominal cost. Mr. Tahar, did you have a question? Thank you for that, Mr. Gierba.
Yes, a question and a comment. Like Mr. Burgoyne, I have sent you some questions. It was similarly not my intention to derail you from the work you're doing for the information for the presentations. Those are just questions on my mind, and I think from what you've said, some of them will, maybe most of them will be answered in the information you're developing, so don't let that derail you. And then, secondly, you mentioned the possibility of visiting the, visiting other dispatch centers. Are you, is there a plan to propose some dates and times or, okay, so that will come to us?
We, yes, we asked each of the three places, and they said, please have your council members come, that we just need to know a date and time. And between Mr. Campbell and I, we will certainly arrange that and make that available for all three, if in fact you'd like to visit all three.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions, comments? Mr. Rock?
I just wondered, do you have any kind of a timeline for when this may happen, far as whether, when it may come to our vote?
No. I guess the easy answer is no, because at this point, we only have one of the entities who's, or municipalities who've given us their proposal. The other two have not. And I know, at least preliminarily, that Pittsfield plans on having some public forums, kind of like the ones that you're looking at, for their citizens, in fact, to see if in fact this is what they want to do, if they want to provide the service. And that may not happen until even after our next March city council meeting. So I don't have a good estimate for you, but I guess if you'd like an estimate, I could say two to three months, I think, before anything solid probably would happen, just to give it a big time period.
Thank you. Mr. Burgoyne?
This may have happened earlier, like three years ago, when this was thought about and so forth, but you said there's a small, middle-sized, and large entity, and the possibility of them doing our dispatch during the night service. Has there ever been thought of us doing the dispatch for a smaller entity, kind of absorbing them, rather than the other way around? Or is that not offered by the other entities or not appropriate?
Well, nobody has approached us and asked us that. We certainly would take a look at that if one of the other places asked us to do that. So I guess the easy answer is no, it hasn't been because nobody's asked us.
Additional comments or questions? Mr. Gierba?
Just one more thing. At our forums that we have, I'd like to have some kind of a presentation that explains exactly what our dispatchers do, something that people can see what they actually do and understand it.
I'll see about videotaping one of them.
But, or something that kind of gives it just a little more either flow or however, because I don't think everyone understands what they do.
Right.
That's one part of it. And then the other piece of it is, I know we're all concerned about safety and concerns, but I think it's trying to figure out how we do this. Because my biggest idea of this right now is, the reason why we're looking at these is because the governor and their approach that looking at us, at how to fund us in the future, are looking at how we do our activities together as a community and regional. And some of these are being forced upon us, not necessarily our choice. And so we're having to look at these things. But I know that some of the aspects of this is understanding exactly what people are doing, and that's really what we got to get across so that everyone understands why we're doing this, too.
And I certainly will try to incorporate that into my PowerPoint. Each one of you who attended the, and of course, it's all of you, you were given a list of all the dispatcher duties, and I think it was like three and a half pages. And so that may be a little cumbersome for a PowerPoint, but maybe some generalizations on what they do.
Right, and that's kind of where I'm looking at.
Sure.
Because I don't think they really realize it's not just the dispatching for police.
Right, it's not just the dispatch.
There's other things that come in, and so-
That's exactly right.
So we all understand exactly what we're seeing and looking at.
Mr. Burgoyne?
This is not a question, just a comment. Couple of weeks ago, I saw as a headline, and I think it was in the local paper, "Celine Looking at Cutting Back Dispatch Services." And in my mind, we're not looking at cutting back, we're looking at trying to do something efficiently with the same level of safety and continuing full services. So when a headline comes out and says "cutting back," I don't get it. It's not what I'm thinking.
I guess the comment-
I noticed that in one of the papers.
The comment that I would have for that is, it's actually impossible for us to cut back our dispatch service because we're at a bare minimum right now. So that would mean that we wouldn't dispatch for a certain time period of the day. So yes, that headline was off.
Additional comments, questions?
Chief, we appreciate it.
Thank you. As the chief indicated, for those of you who have not completed a second dispatch observation, we encourage you to do that and also be looking for a communique from either the chief or from city manager Campbell about visiting one of the three dispatch centers that was referenced earlier, Myland, Pittsfield- centers that was referenced earlier, Myland, Pittsfield Township, and Washtenaw County Sheriff. Hope you'll make an effort to attend all three. And of course, for those of you who have, who've observed dispatch twice and you'd like to do it a third time, we would, we would encourage that. I guess the, the, the thing I would say finally this evening is that, you know, as this process continues, you are encouraged to, to, to speak to staff, especially those frontline employees in our police department. And staff is encouraged to give honest and appropriate feedback. And again, to my earlier point, I understand the concerns, I understand the hesitations. I get that, I respect that. But as I've stated earlier, I believe that we have fundamental responsibilities as elected leaders to, on a routine and timely basis, scrutinize and evaluate every program, every service that we provide to our citizens, to see if there's room for cost savings and approved efficiencies. And you know, many times when we do these analyses, there's a determined made that there isn't room for cost savings and approved efficiencies. But we have a fundamental responsibility to, to look at these things. And quite frankly, in my humble opinion, if we didn't do that, we would be failing you. So again, I greatly appreciate the feedback, and for those of you who are interested and willing, I encourage you to attend one of our two town halls or both. But please know that it's, it's my personal belief, again, that, that public safety is fundamental, and we don't want to be doing anything to, to undermine or hamstring our police firefighters or EMS employees.
Anything further on this issue?
No? Okay. Then we move on to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required, to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Hess. It all depends. Sometimes we like surveys and sometimes we don't. In fact, I think we just took one for downtown three months ago. Is it possible that these surveys that were filled out by the residents a couple of years ago could be dispersed again to the council, because I think there's a couple of council members that have not received those surveys? Also, this could be an advisory vote, because as people elect the council, they also will tell you what your views are. Is it possible to be able to take pictures of the wonderful police department of Myland and Pittsfield as far as their holding cells? Because we won't be able to use ours, of course, at night if we don't have the night dispatch. The other thing is, is that during tornado warnings, we have used, and this was built with the idea that this was an evacuation point for people during a tornado warning. We have had people from our mobile home park, of course, who have no place to go, and they've come here. In fact, the mobile home park in the township has come here. And I think it would only be fair to address where are they going to go if the door is Where are they going to go for safety? Public safety is very important, and I know everyone hopes this will work, but gee, I'd hate to be the one, if something doesn't work and someone gets hurt. You know, they, in fact, in the Ann Arbor news, they say more people are buying guns. Yep. If you don't have, you know, you don't feel safe, I guess you start protecting yourself rather than feeling you are protected. It is a very serious thing, and I'm disappointed that this is one of the issues. Oh, in fact, had you talked about looking into the building department?
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Are there additional citizen comments?
Jim Dunga. Celine Chamber of Commerce, Business Engagement Group. With regards to the dispatch consideration, the chamber will want to have, weigh in on, on a position there. So what I would formally ask is for a position paper with some risk-benefit analysis, so that we can share that with our members, and then take a formal position. That's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Additional citizen comments?
Good evening. Sal Randazzo, 640 Hickory Lane. I'm here tonight as a, a concerned citizen, a, a resident of Celine for 28 years. I raised five children here. Three of them were born in this community, two of them were born in the house that I've lived in for 27 years. Recently, I've had the encounter with members of the Celine City Government. I'm here to relay that to you. My concern is for the culture of the city government. Culture of any organization is important, a healthy culture, whether it be in the private sector, or whether it be in sports, or whether it be in the private sector in the form of city government. And I'd like to make three statements that I, or several statements maybe, that are, I think are uncontroversial. Statement number one, city council does not make law. Laws are made from two entities, that is, from the state legislator or the Congress of the United States of America. City council enacts ordinances. The ordinances must correspond to city law. We live in a country of checks and balances. No member of city council or city government can act as judge, jury, and executioner. Now, I've had the misfortune, and several may know about it, that I received an invoice from the city of Celine for two properties, billing for over $320 for snow removal. Now, I, I have not, I've had some verbal interaction with members of the city government, as well as some written correspondence. I don't feel that city government employees have reacted to, with me appropriately. And I'm very disappointed that members of city government would, being in city government, would take it upon themselves to be judge, jury, and executioner, to produce invoice not only to me, but to 40 other members of the community for not shoveling snow without any due process, without a citation, without a written warning. And when I got my invoice, I did as it was instructed. It said to call the number. I called the number, and I was relayed to Mr. Jeff Fordice, head of the DPW. And I relayed to him my situation, what I had received, and that I had gotten no written notice. And in fact, I was no longer even the owner of the property or in control of the property. And the response I got for him, that my notice was in the form of a newsletter that's published quarterly and comes with the water bill. That was sufficient notice for me. Now, I don't know that I was legally compelled to read the newsletter, nor that it sufficed as written notice. I then had asked him to get back to me, of which he did not. I gave him sufficient time, and then I did follow further correspondence with, then I, with Mr. Fordice, and was told that it was in the hands of the city manager. I emailed the city manager, and I did get a response, and I responded back, and I requested that he get back to me with information in five days, which he neglected to do. I gave him ample time, and he neglected to get back to me or, or respond to me. I don't understand how a DPW person, how a person, number one, could go out and collect 40 different addresses, submit them to DPW, how that they could then become invoices mailed out without any due process, under the nose of a city council and under the nose of a city manager. Now, in one correspondence I got back from city manager Campbell, he said there wasn't improper, something improper did happen, and they offered to refund to me the funds. That's great. I'm really happy that they saw their, their error. But the attitude that I got back from all that I've encountered was not an attitude of, you know, thank you for pointing this out to us. It was more of entrenchment. And I don't think that's a good policy. This is a small community. We all know each other on a personal level. We encounter each other. And so I come to you just saying that we should look at the culture of the city government. I don't, I don't think it's, it's reacting properly with its residents.
Thank you, Mr. Randazzo. Other additional citizen comments? To an earlier point about making sure that information from a survey we conducted two or three years ago is disseminated to council, we'll make sure to do that. That's a good suggestion. And again, for those of you who have questions, concerns related to police dispatch, I strongly encourage you to attend one or both of our upcoming town halls. Future meetings will be on March the 17th, with a work meeting beginning at 6:00 PM to discuss, discuss both the cost of community events and the way we support them, and our cell tower at the old service station on Maple. And then we have our regular council meeting on April the 7th, with a work meeting at 6:00 PM to discuss the budget, and a regular meeting at 7:30 PM. There are, Mr. Rose?
Mayor, yeah, thank you. I will be out of state for the next work meeting and city council meeting on March 17th. So I wanted to go on record here tonight as saying that I support efforts by the community to support nonprofit organizations when they put on events within, within the community. One of the goals of our strategic plan is to build community spirit and civic engagement. And every one of these events that is put on involves a lot of time and effort by volunteers. And I think if we don't show our support for them, we do a disservice to them. And my comments about the cell tower, I don't believe that we should sell that lease. I think it's money in the bank, and we should keep it until, or if we have a dire need for it. And further, it seems like there's enough interest in cell towers that we may have an opportunity to generate more non-tax revenue by creating another cell tower location, perhaps in the gravel parking lot behind Curtis Park, which is a high point in the community. So anyway, I wanted to go on record for that, and I will provide some additional information, which I will send to the city clerk to distribute at that work meeting.
Very good.
Thank you.
We'd appreciate that. If there's nothing further, we have no absences this evening, so we'll dispense with that motion. So at this time, I would seek a motion to adjourn at 9:38 PM.
So moved.
It's been moved by council member Gierbaum. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Tahar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. This meeting's adjourned.